Go for it.
Okay. All right, welcome to the panel elementary school board meeting for Wednesday, January 16th. We had to change a couple of items on the agenda due to the fact that the school was closed today. So we will go right to public comment. Is there any public comment? All right. Okay. Okay, now the budget work session, that's um, is that what you were talking about to me today?
Right, my plan was-
Short and sweet?
Short and sweet, since you got another meeting tomorrow. Um, but unfortunately, I got double booked, and so you're gonna end up with Jim, which you probably prefer anyway. So, this thing keeps getting refined closer and closer each go around. I don't plan on going through this in detail. I just want to hit some of the highlights for you, and then we can, hopefully you can digest this over the evening, and tomorrow you can get into some significant detail if you wish. That's my game plan, if that's okay with everybody. Revenues, have you shown them the revenue chat? This is the first-
No, they did see it last.
They did see it. So this is refined, we went through these a little more today, so they're different than what you saw before. Hopefully, a little better, but um, I lose track a little bit of what um, which district I'm in sometimes. The SVSU assessments have been refined a little bit. I haven't set them yet because I need to make sure that it gets approved tonight before that final assessments gets set. So, we've refined them down a little bit. I'm assuming that you will, you'll probably see another five, six, seven thousand dollar reduction on a total basis for those over time. We've got the debt service in there for the roof, the final year of that, that was left out by mistake. Last couple versions you saw, so that's in the wrong direction from your perspective. Help me, Jim, what else did we tweak here?
Basically, it was that and the SVSU assessments.
And if you look on the very last page, did they see that last time, that breakout last time, Jim?
Yes.
Um, so at the very bottom, you're looking at an increase of um, you know, roughly 12 percent. Four hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-five of that is through the SU assessments. If you turn to, probably 300 of that, if you turn to page four, so 253 of that, um, 375 is in the special ed area, which is driving the majority of those costs. So, net non-assessed increases in panel are 110,000 or 2.75 percent. But just to be full disclosure, I don't want someone to, you know, imply I'm misleading somebody. Even though we're talking about 110 is non-SU, and I know most all of you, you know, with the exception of Jim, but I did give, I did give Jim a down and dirty 101 lesson a couple of weeks ago. All that sped cost is really driven by your needs here in panel. It's not really, you know, an SU decision that's being forced onto you. It's a, um, it's a, those are panel decisions that are, are being flowed through the SU for those purposes. That's the down and dirty there.
What you're saying is the panel alone, panel's going up 12 percent. That is not counting our share of the SVSU?
No, that is, that includes everything. That includes, the 12 percent includes the SU. If you take the SU out of it, it's 2.75 percent.
Okay. And so if anything's changed in our favor, this will change?
Yep.
And when will we know that, after voting?
After tonight.
The SU, the SU changes? Yeah, after tonight, if we're silent, I mean, there's, there's probably five, six, seven thousand dollars reductions that'll take place in here. If you look at the SU assessments, they're just too rounded number to be final. I just, you know, we round them up a little bit as placeholders. They will be reduced once we, once we get this final. The tax rate calculation that I, the second sheet that I passed around, I don't think you're seeing a whole lot of difference. Again, I can't remember what, what you saw last time, but I think it was roughly a 17 cent increase. The one thing that, you know, jumps off the page at me, there's a calculation here, I can see where you're getting at. Um, you know, as your head spending of a rec leg pupil jump at 1500, you know, 1500 dollars is, is a big part of what's driving, driving that tax rate, coupled with the increased base tax rate of five cents. Are you two things that are largely driving those, those numbers?
So over 5 percent is already the .94. I have a question about one other small item for panel. Did I bring that up tomorrow or today?
Doesn't matter, I didn't bring it up today.
To panel.
This for panel. In the last, I'm not sure whether it's two or three years, we have paid Judy some extra, for some extra hours in the summer to, for maintenance of the, of our computers. Right now, that gets more complicated because we have this assessment, so I assume it would come directly out of our budget. What it amounts to is something on the order of a thousand dollars, and the purpose of that is that she likes to totally erase everything from those many netbooks we have, and we have, at this point, about 120 netbooks, and then still about 40 of the next links. And obviously, this can't be done when the, the kids are using them. So, what has happened in the past, that she works in, as part of the mosaic program in July in, in the morning, but in the afternoon, we have paid her to do this maintenance work on the, on the netbooks. And so I don't know how that would be incorporated this time. I'd still like to see it happen, because I think it's very important, because some of the files get corrupted and all this kind of stuff. So, so in other words, in, in September, when the, the child gets their, assigned their computer, it's going to work, rather than immediately crash and so forth. I think you appreciate the importance of that. And if you're spending, let's say, a thousand dollars, that's, that's really like $7 per computer. It's something that's, that's definitely worthwhile. So, I'd just like the board to consider it, and maybe if we can get a, an agreement in principle, then we can, and Jim can figure out where that would go, in what kind of line.
Yeah, I, we, we talked about that in the tech transition, and I'm trying to think.
When it was a bill back, it was simple. We just added it to her salary, but that now doesn't work anymore, I would assume.
Yeah, let, let me think about it, and let me look tomorrow, and Jim will come with an answer for you tomorrow, how, what our, what our suggestion is to handle that.
Okay.
Because I, and I gotta talk to Frank a little bit, I think we've got it covered, but I just want to make sure.
Okay. Well, I just would like to see that happen again, that's, that's my point. I, I won't be on the board then and so on, but it's something that's important to continue.
We'll get you back, I think you're going too far. The last thing I wanted to pass around, and I, I need to somewhat apologize, because I, I had Jim working on this, and he and I didn't get a chance to finally reconcile it before we came back together down here. Those of you that have been on the SU board, I did this for FY13 as a global perspective. Shasbury asked for it. For FY14, as they were getting close to finalizing their budget, you guys are getting, I think, somewhat close. So I asked Jim to throw this together for me today, and, and it shows your local expenditures, as well as your grants that come in through the SU. So it, it shows that your total expenditures in the district is 4.9, even though you're really only gonna be asking 4 or 5 from the, from the voters. And the pie chart just gives it a breakdown, and this was, and I apologize, some of you have heard this a couple of times, but I know a number of you haven't. This is a chart that was actually developed out of five or six various questions that were thrown at me over the last few weeks, and I was able to kind of consolidate all the answers into one simple document, which just shows, and, you know, part of the question was, well, you know, how much is SU administration driving the budget? How much is special ed eaten up of the budget? And a handful of other questions. So if you look at the pie chart, this is specific to panel FY14, as you see it in front of you. And as these things change, they'll kind of move a little bit until they're finally set. They won't move a lot now, because we're, we're kind of late in the game. But SU administration, which is literally everything except special program, special ed, is roughly 6 percent of your budget. Your administration in buildings and operations is roughly 21 percent. Special programs, about 25 percent, and regular programs, about 48 percent. And one of the key things you need to realize, and one of the things I haven't figured out how to show yet, is obviously, those students with the special needs and the green are also accessing that purple slice of the pie as well. So, there's, there's some bleed over into those areas. I'm not sure, and I don't mean to put Jim Kosis on, on the spot here, but I, I know that panel's getting some grant money for their special programs through IDAB, so I don't know if you included that in 395? So that's in the 395?
Yes.
So we gotta break that out. So, as part of that 395 needs to go up into special programs, and we'll, we'll try to fix that for you for tomorrow night, so you can see how much you get to support special, special program. I hope that's helpful, some people have been asking for some of this information. And then once you guys warn your budget, we can put a final, final number together, maybe another, you know, piece-
I like the breakdown.
Maybe, maybe another piece the community needs to understand, but it was, it was a creation of mine after numerous questions came my way. That's my short, brief little spiel. I'm here for, to be beat up if you want to, because you won't see me tomorrow night.
Do you have any questions, anybody?
Throw rocks and sticks, or whatever else you want to do.
Could you quantify the lead over from special ed to 48 percent? In my mind, it's one-fifth of the population is special ed, so-
Probably, 20 percent of that, 48 might be.
Well, the, the pie makes it look like they're separate.
Yeah.
But they're not. I would say that every child in, who's in special, well, let me think about that now.
Not the ones who are in Bennington?
Right, right.
Majority of them are included in the-
I would say, two, two out of 50 students that are in special ed, those two would only be green. All the other ones are in the blue part also.
I think you got a good analysis, Jim. If, if your population's 20 percent, um, so, you know, 20 percent of that 50 percent, they're also probably accessing some of that.
If they weren't special ed, that wouldn't change the number.
That wouldn't change that.
That 48, that number would still be the same.
Right.
Right. But they're, the special ed students are in the classrooms, with, using the materials and the books, getting instruction from the classroom teachers, and the gym teacher, and all of the things.
One of the things that's come up at a couple of other meetings too, and I, I mean, I, I haven't been here, so I apologize, and I don't know the conversations you guys have had. But I just need to stress, and I mean, I was fortunate, I didn't have any special needs students, but some people are misinterpreting this extra money as extra for these students, and it, it really, it is extra, but it's to get them to where everyone else is. It's not to get them above everybody else, and that's some of the misconception that's starting to fly around out in the conversations, that well, you know, they're getting all this, well, they are, they're getting some extra stuff, but it's just to get them to where everybody else is, it's not to give them more than everybody else. Is that a fair, a statement?
Yes, to get them where everybody else is, but because of their unique needs, sometimes it's very different how we have to do it. It's not, it's not simple. But you're right, Rick.
And the other thing I think we also have to keep remembering is that part of that green stuff comes back as revenue.
Correct.
So that it's not really that big a slice in what taxpayer-
As in that number, right.
Is there any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna move on. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to move Karen up. That constituted our budget work, is that what it was? Is that why that's on there?
That's it.
Yeah, because we're not gonna work on it. Okay. All right, Karen, does the board mind if we move Karen up?
No.
All right. She's gonna be quick to it, I think.
Oh, sure. She thinks it's pretty up to her.
Yep.
I just wanted to take a minute and introduce to Danielle Devoe. Danielle was hired October 1st, and is the early childhood coordinator for SVSU.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
So she's here, we've been working side by side, she's learning about what we've done in the past, and the partnerships we've had in the past, and about the Vermont system. She has a lot of experience in New York, and so she's been working with me, and she's been invaluable in moving forward a lot of the projects.
Where she's gonna be working?
She works as part of the early childhood program, and she and I and Helen Brice share an office.
Oh, okay.
Danielle's responsibilities have been really the pre-K partnerships, and making site visits, and working with the partners, and assuring that all of the quality standards that we want to be met are being met, and doing professional development and things like that. So she's-
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. She's a great asset.
Yes.
Has a lot of knowledge. So, you want me to jump right in, or do you want us-
Yes, jump right in.
Jump right in.
Jump right in, okay. Todd and I had a conversation maybe about a month or six weeks ago or so about public pre-K. As you know, many of the towns around panel and in the SVSU are providing public pre-K services for their four-year-old students. It is allowed through an act that was signed in 2007, and some of you had heard, have heard this already, so I apologize, but to get everybody else on the same page, it does allow you to use your education fund dollars to provide public pre-K. Some of you have experiences with it in different ways. Though, what the law, the law is interesting, and what the law says is, public schools can provide public pre-K, and public pre-K does not have to be within your school, the four walls of your school. In fact, the law suggests that the opportunities for children should be convenient to families, not require a lot of transitions, and be in, within their community as much as possible. And the law is very clear about that. So when you hear about public pre-K, immediately people think, and in fact, Todd and I had this conversation, oh, there's no room at panel for a public pre-K program. Well, that doesn't mean that you can't think about other options, and some of our partners in Shasbury, North Bennington and Bennington are using the community to provide their public pre-K, which is allowable. Public pre-K is defined as being 10 hours, a minimum of 10 hours a week of pre-K services, 35 weeks in the school year, so we follow the school-wide calendar. It can be more, you can pay for more, but the minimum is 10 hours. The providers, or however you go about providing public pre-K services, they, the providers have to meet some quality standards. You can use school-based programs that currently exist. If you're gonna start a school-based program, you have to really look at all of your community partners and say that they're not a viable partner for you to use, or they don't have capacity, or they don't meet the quality standards. We have found it very effective to use community partners so far in the other partnerships. But the facilities have to be licensed through the childcare division, so they have to have a childcare license, and they have to be good regulatory standards, so they, they can't have any violations or things like that, they would not be a qualified partner. They have to also be either accredited through the National Association for the Education of Young Children, or they have to have four or five stars from, in a program in Vermont called STARS, and STARS stands for Step Ahead Recognition System. And they need, it's a five-star program, and they need to have four stars or five stars, which proves that they go a little bit beyond the licensing standards, and they've ramped up their work to a different level of quality. If you have a program that wants to be a partner, and they have three stars, they can apply to the Department of Ed and the Department of Children and Families to get a waiver, and say that over the next two years, I'm gonna do this in my facility, and you get four stars. So, some three-star providers can be a partner. They also have to have a set curriculum, and the set curriculum has to be aligned with the Vermont Early Learning Standards. A curriculum, it's an umbrella, just like you have in the public system, early childhood has that too, and they need to be aligned with that. They need to have ways in which parents can participate in the program, so you're thinking about that parent engagement, that's so important, that I know your board has talked about, you have a family home liaison. They also need to have a licensed teacher, and the licensed teacher has to have a license from the Department of Education, and the person needs to have an endorsement, either an early childhood or early childhood special education. Some of our facilities have licensed teachers on-site, and if they don't, and they meet all the other quality standards, then one of the arrangements that we've done in providing public pre-K is the, the school district has provided that teacher to them. Now, there is a, there is a requirement that either you are contracting for, or providing through a contract, pre-K services for 10 hours, and you would exchange cash for that service, or if you're providing a licensed teacher, it becomes an in-kind service, but there is a formal agreement, and there is a formal way that you provide that service. These children in return are counted in ADM, so they become part of your school census, and we have to do all of the reporting and tracking that you would do just for your, like, your CADA 6 system, or your CADA 12 system, we do the same thing. There is a, and Rick, you know, is the master of the ADM conversation, I always, I'm a little nervous when he's here to talk about it, so I always defer to him, but the, the students do count in the census, and not at the same rate that they would as a sixth grader or a high schooler. The state will tell you it's for a .46 per student, when in fact, I think he, Rick prefers to say it's about a .4, as, you know, as you go through the four walls. So you do get the same credit, it is on the same average as it would be with your typical students in your school. The first year is often the difficult year for a board to make a decision, because the ADM hasn't really kicked in, and so you need some bridge money to be able to get your program up and running. And what has happened in the past is we've been very successful in working some, with some philanthropic partners in the, in the state, who've provided us with grant money over a two-year period of time to get us up and running. I know that the, the funders are moving away from funding these kind of projects. I did ask them, I emailed them, because Woodford has decided to pursue public pre-K in Woodford, and we'll be, Danielle and I will be working on that. And I did ask the liaison to the funders if there was a chance we could apply for some grant money, if boards were interested. And they said that they were interested in supporting them, they weren't sure if they would be the funder, or since the governor has come out with an incentive for, you probably read that, for an incentive for school districts to provide public pre-K, whether it would come from the state coffers, not sure what that means, or from the, from the funders, but they were very encouraging that there would be some financial support through grant money to, to be that bridge money to get a project up and running. Let's see, what else can I tell you? I took, I did some notes so that I could be efficient in my conversation with you. If you decide, first of all, it's the board decision to decide, it has to be a board decision, it has to be a formal motion to decide to do pre-K. It, you can make a motion, which many towns have done, Bennington did it last year, just to explore it, and we go and do some light work, and come back with a proposal for you about what we feel would make sense in panel. We are required by law to do a very comprehensive community needs assessment, which means that we have to include your community in the decision about pre-K, what it means, what it might look like. We have to survey all your providers, we have to try to locate all of your students, and I've already, I shared some information about Todd, with Todd, about what we've done in the past. We actually look birth through five, so we're collecting information, and although we, panel wasn't on board last year when we did our community needs assessment from Bennington, since so many of the children in the Southwest Vermont Supervisor Union use the same childcare providers, we collected information about panel already, and we've passed that around, so, down here, so that when kindergarten came, they already had our census data to add to the one that they already had. But we do have to do a very comprehensive needs assessment, which would give us opportunity for your community to have input, for your parents to have input, for your school folks to have input. Then we would bring all of that information back, share it with you, and make a recommendation to you, or let you make your own decisions about it, but we would, you know, certainly do some analysis about that for you. So with that said, I'll stop and let you ask questions if you have them. I guess my purpose today here, I know we've talked in years past about public pre-K here.
Six years ago.
And it, so I'm just back again to put it back on the table, to have you at least think about it, think about whether or not it's time to explore it. You know, we know the research, we know what makes a difference. So, I don't know, Todd, if you want to add anything to what I said?
No, within our, within our conversation, you know, since I'm, I'm new to Vermont, a lot of the regulations and the STARS and the providers, all that was, you know, definitely new to me. But whenever we look at education and we take a look at pre-K, it's a very beneficial education for a student before they enter the regular elementary school age and kindergarten. Whatever educational experiences that they can get prior to entering kindergarten, we see that those students seem to do so much better. So the conversation that Karen and I had, it's, it's, it really makes sense for students to have that experience to get them ready for, for elementary.
What I have read, the governor is really pushing for pre-K, so maybe we could get it.
Yeah, he, he's really is, it is gonna be one of his goals this year, I understand. And we do know what makes a difference, and I think with having Danielle, and I don't know Danielle if you want to add anything to the conversation, but having Danielle be able to have the time to be able to go out and spend time, she's been doing observations and helping providers with their curriculum, with their classroom environment, with their materials, with their schedule, so that we can support their quality and help increase their quality. And the reality is, with or without pre-K, the children are out in all of those community settings, and without some initiative, it doesn't give us the ability to go out and support them the way that we would if it was a more formalized, child-specific relationship. And you have a lot of providers that your families use. And, you know, what was interesting for us in Bennington is, when we did our community needs assessment there, we found that many, many children, we found 122 children, 122 four-year-olds, and out of the 122 four-year-olds, all but six were in some kind of formal childcare, either in a, a center, in a Head Start program, in a family home childcare. So they were all in some kind of regulated care, and only six were not, and we were very surprised by that. We thought that there would be a much- We thought that there would be a much larger population. In our collection of data, you do the developmental screenings for incoming kindergarten students every year, and my office is one that collects that data and analyzes that data, and I didn't have time to do it today, which I was hoping to, but I wanted to take a look, because one of the pieces that is reflected in that data is, has the child had an opportunity to be in a licensed or registered family childcare or preschool or Head Start? I wanted to look at that, and that would be part of what we, you know, would bring back to you.
Angie, so.
Well, she could pretty much answer my question, I was going to ask how this program would affect, like, Oak Hill or Head Start and their funding. If we took on a pre-K, what would that do to, like, Head Start and Oak Hill?
Actually, what happens is we, if the decision is made to utilize community partners, which again, the law says you need to consider first, we actually end up supporting them, and we have, now Bennington has partnership with Oak Hill, and because they have a licensed teacher there, then what we are doing is, we are providing a cash amount to the parent to help offset their tuition payment, so that the child can participate in a quality environment. I mean, we don't give the cash to the family, we enter an agreement with Oak Hill, and the family sees a reduction in their weekly tuition bill for the 10 hours that the school district is paying for a designated time for pre-K activities. And then Danielle's work, she goes and helps support them, and we do a once-a-month meeting, we're planning some professional development with Oak Hill, with Head Start, with, you know, we have lots, we have, what, 13 providers for Bennington pre-K right now, so we have a network. And, you know, there's panel children in those facilities that we're already working with. So, it's not meant, a lot of people, when we first started doing pre-K, Angie, people worried, oh my god, you're going to put us out of business, and that's not the intention, the intention is to support the infrastructure that already exists to the best of our ability.
Kim?
Confused.
Oh, sorry?
How, so pre-K and Head Start, what's the difference? If we have Head Start, which I think is kind of like pre-K, why do we need something else?
It's not a designated public pre-K, and it has a lot of the components of pre-K, and it's one of our partners for pre-K, but your board has not designated Head Start as your public pre-K provider, and we would be working with them, they have, they don't have, next door, they don't have a licensed teacher, but they do have national accreditation, they do have five stars, they do have a curriculum, they do follow the bill, so they have components of it, they do do an assessment. We actually partner with them already because of our children with disabilities, and the children at risk in our supervisory union that are there, but it's not, you have to, we would be supplementing what Head Start currently does.
And Head Start programs are limited on the population that they serve. Head Start only serves low-income families. We would be serving all eligible four-year-olds.
That answers the question.
Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
I was looking for the need, you know, I was having a hard time finding the need.
Well, and you know, that's a really good question, because that's part of what the community needs assessment is, is what is the need in panel? And, you know, and what are your scores telling you? How, what's, how, we'll be looking at those dial screening results and saying, what's your trend for the children coming into your school? Anecdotally, we hear from teachers, wow, they're, you know, they need more. I don't know if that's still what you're hearing this year, but I know in years past, we've heard, you know, we need to work with them more. So we'll be looking at a lot of information, bringing that back to you and saying, this is what we're finding, does it make sense?
So what, actually what we need then is a motion to look forward, we're looking for the.
And it doesn't, you know, as we've said to other places, and Rick, jump in if I'm misspeaking, but really, you're not committing to anything until we get to the end.
You get the information.
You're just giving us the opportunity to do the community needs assessment, because the first step is I have to send a letter to the now Secretary of Education and let him know that you're considering it, that we'll be doing a community needs assessment. Because panel, just in the beginning of, not panel, sorry, Woodford, just in the beginning of January, decided we would combine the community needs assessments and do both at the same time.
I'd like to make a motion, move forward then.
Okay.
Is that a more question?
Let's get the motions on the floor, we need a second, then you can.
Second.
All right, motion's been made second, and now you may ask a question.
Okay, a typical week is how many hours?
Ten.
But that's three, three, three-hour days type of thing, or?
The facility identifies the part of their day, because many of them are full day, full year, which parents prefer. They would identify at least 10 hours a week, that would be their public pre-K time. Some of the facilities might have 25 hours a week, that's public pre-K time. Others may have 12 hours a week, they may have 10 hours a week. So they designate to us what their public pre-K time is, and we have to assure that the child is participating in a schedule that allows them access to at least 10 hours of that time.
I guess the question for Rick is, what does this cost per pupil typically? For 10 hours, whatever, whatever's typical, how much are we adding?
The programs that we've put into place with panel, or North Bennington and Shasbury in Houghley County, they've been in, I think Shasbury's in its fourth year, North Bennington maybe third year.
I think we're actually six.
Six?
Yeah.
It actually functions to, is a net sum zero on the tax rate to the taxpayers. Once you build up that volume of equalized pupils, as Karen was talking about with the funders that we get front load, because it'll cost us something in the first year, and every town's different for a whole host of reasons, but it'll, it'll cost us something in the first year to get 40 kids, say, in the program. But we can't count those 40 kids, because the equalized pupil formula is based on a two-year average. And so we need that grant upfront to fund the first year, then we get half the grant to fund the second year, because we already have now one, you know, half of those pupils in the system. And what's happened so far in all the districts, and is projected to happen in Bennington too, although this is our first year in Bennington, is that it's a net sum zero on the tax rate. And it's typically, the amount of equalized pupils you're able to bring in will typically reduce your overall cost per pupil, because now you're bringing them in at, you know, between $2,000 and $3,000 a head, but yet you spread out all of your fixed costs for your heat, lights, and everything else in this building to those, you know, 20 equalized pupils that you're going to be able to bring onboard, and I'm just throwing hypothetical numbers out at you. So it kind of spreads out a lot of that fixed cost, but it kind of brings down your cost per pupil. So it's really a win, it's been a win-win in North Bennington and Shasbury, it's projected to be a win-win in Bennington. I wouldn't anticipate it would be anything other than that here.
Just a big, big believer in pre-K. All my grandkids are going to pre-K.
Yeah, it's important.
It's just tremendous.
Karen, I want to, okay, wait, we're all set. Any more questions?
I'm done.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand unanimous. Thank you, Karen, for coming down and explaining to us. Now we got the official go-ahead, we can see what we can do. Good luck.
So what I'll do is I'll keep you in the loop as to what we're doing. We'll definitely keep Todd in the loop, because we'll want to circulate questionnaires, you know, information to parents through, you know, if you're Friday, take home, whatever take homes or whatever. We'll want to do some forums here on site, inviting people to come, and we'll make sure that you're aware of it, so that if you want to come and have a good. But we, so we'll do, when I said we would combine Woodford and panel, we'll actually combine them for efforts, we're actually going to be updating some things in the other towns as well. So we'll really do an SVSU look, but we'll do site-specific things for you and for Woodford, because we've got a host of different set of questions to ask you in these places.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're great. Okay, let's move down to action items. The treasurer's report was enclosed, there are no budget transfers. Is there any questions on the treasurer's report? I see none. We're down to the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Second motion's been made second. Is there any questions on consent agenda? That includes what we've been handed today. My question is, this $3,385, what is that? What is it for? Just as general fund?
This is?
It was added.
So that's, that's just the stuff that goes with payroll, all of the taxes and all those things, and their deductions and so on, that's always part of our warrants, and we don't normally worry about that too much, it's.
Yeah, those are, those are the deductions for your payrolls.
So those are sort of automatic.
Is there, I got an email though, that said that it was added or something, something?
Well, we normally have that as part of our warrants.
I think it was just, I think it was an oversight, it wasn't added. It wasn't included to begin with, it was an oversight, it wasn't part of it, it was a back on it. So the line's a little bit dangerous.
Okay, yes.
That's correct.
Is there any other?
It was just the accounts payable.
Question on the, on the consent agenda, other than mine?
In the, in the budget, there was, I mean, in the minutes, there was one mistake, and it's on page three, and it says something about Pembroke and Buck have been working together with the SVS Finance Committee on Special Education Programs, and then it says parentheses, in panel, there are two special education students. It's obviously not right, it should be more like 51 or something.
The two are probably, that are tuitioned out somewhere else.
Well, no, then it goes on about Acorns and Plus Program and so on, so that's sort of covered separately. So I don't know how you want to, whether you want to fix that or just leave it alone.
Did you see it, Karen?
Did you? Did you see what I was talking about?
I don't even remember what it was about.
You're questioning the two at the bottom, Gudrun?
The two in the parentheses, the third paragraph from the bottom.
Yep, we're looking at it.
I would just say where it's in the parentheses, this is just my suggestion.
That was with the two that were.
Panel, there are two special education students that are tuitioned out to another district.
Yes.
I think you just need to finish that thought.
Okay.
That's, I wasn't here, but I'm just guessing by reading, that's what.
Well, I don't know if you, but there are really more, if you consider plus and so on, so.
Well, then you can put, yeah, I mean, then you can put another sentence on the end of there, saying that, you know, then there's another 50.
Well, that's all below it.
Oh.
We were talking about the two special children that were tuitioned out.
They're in the Acorns program.
To the Acorns program.
Right.
But then they're mentioned again, in the next paragraph, one is mentioned again, and a new one will be joining, and he'll be a case student.
I think just cross that whole thing out in the parentheses, I think that'll.
Just cross the parentheses.
It's all my fault, I'm sorry.
You were tired about that.
Well, I added some things that are in there too, so it.
She never showed up.
All right, we'll just cross it out. Any other question?
Cross out the part in parentheses, and then it's fine.
Okay.
Cindy was sick too, so.
Okay, now we're getting confused. Did we, we didn't vote on the consent agenda?
Nope.
All right, all, any other questions on the consent agenda? Are you seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, it's unanimous. Okay, policies, none? Facilities? What's that on there for?
I'm not sure whether we needed any updates.
I don't have anything.
Okay, we have nothing, all right. Any old business?
I'm giving you this.
Let's move right down to the principals' reports.
I just wanted to take a couple minutes and talk about our safety committee and what we've been doing.
Okay.
There's a good representation within the building, we have about 20 members on our safety committee, ranging from classroom teachers to maintenance, to pares, to office staff, to nurse, specialists, so a real good representation. At our last meeting, we took a look at our evacuation packs, every classroom, every area within the building has an evacuation pack, so we've been going through those things and making sure that they were updated and have all of their items included. At our last SVSU admin meeting, Bennington Police Chief Paul Ducep was there, talking about our emergency plans and building security, and Rick, correct me here if I'm wrong, I know there's going to be a building safety audit coming up in the future.
Yes, we are, yeah, we're contracting, hopefully with a retired state police officer who's had a great deal of experience in this area, that we'll do an audit of the facility to look at doors, windows, locks, cameras, that type of stuff.
And then one thing that I brought up in that meeting, as we were going through our plans, is the use of a green and red card indicating whether things are safe or whether there's a problem or not, and I don't know whether we received any information back from.
Is that a practice you have here, or not?
We do use the red, green.
We do? I would continue to use the.
Right, and that was the decision to do at that, was to continue until we heard anything more about that, but.
That was the first I ever heard of not doing. I think that especially the emergency service providers appreciate that notification, so they can see from the outside of the building what is going on inside.
So the committee will keep meeting and, you know, taking a look at our procedures within the building, and.
Freddie would know a lot more after the safety audit goes through, and we can take it from there.
And that's really all I wanted to update the board on.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, Uncle Todd? You brought an interesting.
I guess my question is, the first meeting I was at, you brought up the use of the school as a shelter. Do we have any plans in place for that? And I did a little bit of work on it. Apparently the Red Cross has somebody to help us.
Yeah, it's the Red Cross takes care of that, then.
We were going.
We have to sign an agreement with them as to what's what.
One of the things that would have happened when there was a problem, I think, probably after the budget started, so we didn't, we went away till after the budget session, but I think we have an emergency coordinator here in town, I think at one of our meetings, like after January, February or so, what we need to do is invite him here and get the appropriate people, maybe somebody from the Red Cross, and we need to sit down, and so that we're all on the same page, and we.
There is a person at the Red Cross that coordinates.
Yes, yeah.
A little tidbit, if the school's used as an emergency shelter with their infamous generator, they'll pay for the fuel to run the generator while the school's being used as an emergency shelter. I thought that was nice.
That was nice. I think what we have to do, those.
If it works.
Get our generator working.
I don't know, is there any way that there could be a subcommittee from the board with some of us to look into that, inviting the Red Cross, people from the community to kind of take a look at our building too?
I think some of the Red Cross connections have been made before, but, you know, because they hasn't made any emergency yet, so it hasn't, it's sort of stagnated or whatever.
I do know too, that the, Shasbury is working closely with the Red Cross and some of the emergency organizations, because they just are in the process of installing a generator, they haven't had one before, and there are some community forum meetings, like trainings going on right now, you might want to contact Jim Harwood and ask him about that, because I know several of their board members are attending those meetings in the community, and they really are training sessions about what would you do if there was an emergency, and if this was a facility, what role would you play? So that might be an interesting place to start. I know they're offering them like on, in a sequence, but over several months, so there are, they'll be on a cycle, and there'll be another chance for any of you to go if you were interested.
Oh, definitely, yeah, we can get ahold of Jim. I think what happened was, the town itself, when they had the last emergency meeting, firemen invited, they invited me to the meeting, and nobody knew. firemen invited, they invited me to the meeting, and nobody knew, you know, what do we do? I mean, if we use the school, who do we contact? How do we get in? You know, and there was just, and at the time, we were having trouble with our generators, so I told them that. And it just, to me, it was all, all messed up, and it shouldn't be. It should be a straight line. This is who you contact, blah, 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 and ABC. And I think that's what really kinda made me stop and think about, we don't have our ducks in a row.
The Department of Education sent me a formal letter, which I gave to everybody, recommending to contact a Mr. Larry Kupferman of the Red Cross. He's the local disaster shelter initiating, initiative coordinator. Apparently, the first thing they do is they conduct a field, a field survey of this facility and tell us, first off, it's okay, and then what we need and don't need. And then we actually sign a contract with them, as to the expect, similar expectations here, I love it. They do expectations here, but expectations as of the school and the Red Cross as to who does what. So, so I think we should, we should pursue it as Todd recommends.
I just wanna throw in here that for less major emergencies, let's say mini emergencies, they've used the firehouses. So that, that, you know, if they're just, let's say, three families that are flooded or three people that are flooded, they do have some capacity there. This is more for, for the more major, yeah, if you suddenly, you know, have twenty-five people who need to go somewhere, or a hundred people, you know, this kind of thing.
But at least, at least if we pursue this, then they'll know the steps. Number one, who to contact, what a number, and what are the, the steps they have to go through to, if they have to use the school, because we are designated as...
Could I make a motion to, to give permission? Form a, to give permission to somebody to look into this?
I don't know if you need a motion for that, but if you feel comfortable.
I was looking to see maybe if there was a subcommittee that could, that could look into this, but, in the meantime, I'll call, I'll call Jim Harwood.
Get some information from him, and then if, Jim, if you want to, to work with Todd, and I don't mind myself either, I mean, you know, just keep me informed, and if you want a subcommittee, we'll get a couple of parents together, and, yeah, we could do that. But I think we should ask Jim first what they're doing.
We'll do. Todd's gonna do that.
Todd'll do that, and then he'll let us know. Okay? Is that okay with you, Angie?
That's fine.
Okay, notice, Angie, I didn't look at you and put you on anything else. Did you know what I'm saying? Say thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else?
That's it?
Oh, that's it? Oh, good. But the other question that came up was, now, I don't know if we could, we probably could wait till tomorrow and talk about, this is the cleaning stuff, the environmental... We took care of it?
We took care of it, but we can talk about tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, very good. Okay. Sad as it is, I have nothing to report as the chair. So don't get too upset.
I think we can deal with that.
All right. How about Donna, do you have anything to share?
I do have a couple things. I'll make it quick for you, though, it's really, it's good. What I'm passing out right now is a press release that was just sent out yesterday by the Vermont School Board Association, Representative Steve Dale, and the Vermont Superintendent's Association, who put out this joint statement in conjunction with the governor's speech that he just gave shortly, a few days ago. And they just wanted to put forth a few major goals that they plan to focus on together. And they are listed here, assuring success for every student. And again, you'll see the emphasis there that we will be placing on universal access to pre-K and high expectations for every student. And supporting a new vision for teaching and learning. They are really looking at teacher preparation and licensure systems to make sure that they are really meeting the vision and the needs of our students today, as, as needs are changing. Looking at engaging and supporting families and communities and building connections between families and schools. By, and again, the emphasis there was on trying to make collaborative relationships with human service agencies and education systems. I guess, I think that also speaks to our, our needs for looking at coordinating services for, in the area of mental health, and really supporting families in need. And I think it's very important for our educational community to be looking at partnering with the agencies. Delivering world-class technology, again, looking at access. I know you were speaking about that at your budget meeting, that you are, have, looking at some ways that you can implement, like the Kindle readers here in your library, or ways to supplement that in your school. And providing effective leadership, really looking at better ways to prepare superintendents and boards in offering leadership for excellent education. So that statement is available for you to read, but I think that those areas that are mentioned are strongly correlated with what some of the goals of the governor, which are looking like he will be putting a lot of emphasis on education. And then I just wanted to mention that on the twenty-fifth of January, we will be offering a professional development day for all staff members, for all K to eight teachers, and all pre-K to twelve paraprofessionals. And we have many opportunities that have been brought forth by principals and administrative leaders, and also staff members on our professional development committee, that are meeting the needs for many areas of learning. There will be a workshop on autism, on how to use technology in the classroom more effectively, how to use technology for looking at student data to really focus on student needs. And we also will be having a few full-day workshops on crisis intervention, foundations training, which is really a fundamental reading program that is part of our SVSU literacy curriculum. We also will have a special presenter, Susan Lowell, who will be coming to provide some professional development, especially for paraprofessionals in literacy support. And Susan actually will be coming here to panel too on the twenty-fourth, to work with Todd and his staff in some of the great work they're doing with looking at student data and really monitoring student growth in the area of, of reading. And we also have a great presenter coming, Polly Bath, who will be doing a workshop on managing student behaviors that interfere with instruction. And she offers some very good concrete instructions on how to manage student behavior, and she, she does it in a very fun way, but very student-centered, in really looking at student strengths and how do we help students learn in the classroom in the best ways we can. So those are just a few of the opportunities, but it will be for all staff, and a few of the workshops will be in the schools, but most of them will be at the middle school. So it's a great day for staff members for learning and collaborating and getting together to help improve their instructional capacity.
That's good. It's actually an appropriate time for that, too, if we're, I'm glad she's coming. Thank you. And, you know, the Vermont School Board Association is phenomenal. They, they're there to help us. I don't think we utilize them enough, and Stephen Dale was just, he's marvelous. He, he took over a couple of years ago, and he's just, he's absolutely, you have a question? You wanna call him? He'll, he'll get back to you. All right. All right. We have the budget status report. Okay, is there any other business to come before the board? We do have a budget session meeting tomorrow at five-thirty, that hopefully will wrap up our, our budget. Take care of that. Is there any other business to come before the board? No? Tonight is our first night this year that we're meeting. Right after our meeting, we're going to the SVSU. So excited to have two meetings in a row. I'm now gonna, I'm starting to feel like cats. Before we do close out, I see two people over there. Judy, I know, so I'm going to assume that your husband is the one that took papers out?
Yes.
You took papers out to be on the school board?
I've told you to stand up, so I guess I have to.
Yes.
Yeah, matter of fact, I got the signatures, I'm on the ballot now.
Very good. Very good. You have no clue what you're getting yourself into.
That's what everybody tells me.
He says you're retired. What did you, you're a glutton for punishment?
Well, very good.
Yeah, I'm looking for something to do, so...
But you're here tonight, that's good.
I appreciate the fact that you come to the board to see what, what we do.
I've got one question for you. Do you have any bylaws or anything that I could get ahold of, to find out how you run your organization? Or don't you have anything like that?
I don't think we have bylaws for board, do we? We don't go through what we do.
No, not really. But the supervisor union has some training for new board members?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they will be doing that.
That, that, it'll be after March, obviously, after the election.
I'd just, assuming I win.
Yes, so that, that definitely, I would avail myself of that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
If you, and I'm the one that's leading. So that I'm glad there's someone who will fill the place.
I cover a lot of technical background, so I should be able to fill in quite a lot of it. I understand that was your strong suit.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so if there's no other business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Just a second, motion to adjourn second. All right, thank you.
We have a whole hour before the SVSU meeting.
Yeah, you can get something to eat, besides your potato.